All right, good evening, everyone. Counsel, are you all logged into Civic Clerk?
No.
Please do that while we're gonna go ahead and get roll call started, and Suzanne is present via Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Labar?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Case here. Councilmember Connors?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Nakai?
Here.
Councilmember Neil, I believe, is absent.
He is.
Thank you. Councilmembers Zuluaga?
Present.
Thank you. (inaudible) of America. (inaudible) stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Wow. There were about fifteen renditions going on. Right. All right, this evening, we are going to start with an application from Kevin O'Neill for reapport appointment to the Board of Adjustments, and I'm gonna let Suzanne take that.
Thank you, Mayor. As you said, this evening, we have an application from Kevin O'Neill, and he is reapplying. So he's an incumbent. He's been in the position, and his term is expired now, and he is reapplying for one of the regular positions. And I know counsel always asks me how many positions are open and all of that, and so currently, there are two alternate positions open. If Mr. O'Neill would get this position, then they would be full except for the alternate positions. If Mr. O'Neill receives this position, it would expire on January 1st of 2027.
Very good.
I believe Mr. O'Neill's with us in the audience.
We are not seeing him. I don't see, I don't know if he's on Zoom. I'm not logged into Zoom.
Okay, let me, let's check here. I can check.
Aaron says that he's not.
Okay.
So, so let's go ahead and push this to the next meeting so that he can be present.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All right, we've got four, nothing, but we have consent calendar. Counsel, can we take consent calendar as one?
No, I would like to see them separate.
Okay, what item do you need separated?
I like discussion on 1471.
So item A?
Yep.
Do we take that first or go ahead and do consent and then?
You can approve the other one first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Whichever. All right, well, let's go ahead and do the I-5B approval of January statement of expenditures then, Suzanne, or I'm sorry, Aaron is presenting that.
Yes, I have the statement of expenditures for December.
Okay, no questions on that, right?
No.
Okay. So can I get a motion, please? I'll make a motion to approve the January 2024 statement of expenditures.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a first, I have a first of Nakai and a second of Connors. Labar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Whoops.
Yes.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So I'm gonna hold item A to number eight ordinances on initial postings then. So we are off to item number six, which is public comment on items not on the agenda.
Yes, we have quite a few signed up this evening, Mayor. The first person that I have signed up via online application is Arnie Sparnins.
Line the wires, Arnie.
That came up fast. Anyway, thank you. My name is Arnie Sparnins. I live in the Sunny Glen neighborhood. And so Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, I just wanted to take this time to thank you for the efforts with today's STR Title V workstation, work session that was just held. I mean, it's a significant step forward for this community to see our STR business license process, you know, be now integrated, you know, with our Title 18 zoning regulations, you know, specifically the Title 18 zoning regulations passed by the Citizens Initiative. So hopefully, we're at a point in time that we can move, you know, move on from this chapter in our city's history. You know, we now have an outcome the citizens have been asking for since day number one of the community engagement process, and so I think we all look forward to continuing our peaceful lives in this beautiful community. You know, once again, having neighbors who really are neighbors, you know, having neighbors, you know, who are good neighbors without being required by law to do so, you know, a real community once again. So thank you for your efforts with the work session today, and you look forward to seeing that come forward as an ordinance very soon. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Kitten Walker.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to announce and invite the City Council candidates to a City Council Candidate Forum on March 20th, held by the Community Involvement Team. And I want to stress that this community involvement team has nothing to do with Charis Bible College. It is not a church function. This is a community function. So I apologize if the candidates have not received their invitations yet, but it will be forthcoming, and the community is invited. It would be at the Woodland Park High School Auditorium, March 20th, from 6 until 8. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carol Green Street.
Hi, Carol Green Street from Woodland Park. Mayor and counsel, I'm aware that you'll be meeting with the Woodland Park School District Board of Education later this month to discuss revisions to the IGA that was agreed upon in 2016. I would like to address that IGA. I was president of the board at the time, and I will tell you, no one person was responsible for getting that tax passed. We relied on the City Council to give us the opportunity to bring it before voters. The entire Board of Education and Central Office Administration was active in educating voters. A retired superintendent, John Pacheco, jumped into the mix. Several community leaders were involved as well. At that time, and I believe still today, Teller County had some of the highest total mills assessed and one of the lowest mills going to schools in our area. We knew the taxpayers could not and would not support increased property taxes. We felt like the sales tax was a good alternative. Families generally spend more money in community than seniors by the very size of their households. We thought it would create a scenario that those families who use the schools would be paying a larger share of the cost. We were able to retire a bond in exchange for the sales tax. I was told the bond paid for the expansion of the middle schools and high schools. A certificate of participation was taken out to cover the cost of the bond and should be retired in 2036. The ballot question laid out intended uses for the sales tax revenues with one of our biggest concerns being competitive teacher pay. I am certain, all of you know, that I have been disappointed in the actions of the current board around fiscal responsibility and the needs of our district. Even in this disagreement and disappointment, I know this district needs this sales tax money. But I would like to ask you to consider adding a provision to the IGA. We live in a day that education is becoming business for some. There are online schools, contract schools, and I'm sure many other forms that are profitable for some, perhaps only due to the large salaries from taxpayers. Since this Board of Education hired a superintendent whose only education experience is specifically with charter and contract schools and online schools, I'm concerned that this Board of Education may want to bring some of these schools under the umbrella of our district, serving students that do not live in our district nor attend schools in our district. These families will not support our businesses or pay sales tax. I am concerned that this Board of Education would like to include these students in the per pupil distribution of this tax. This would dilute the tax provided to the students that reside and attend schools in our district. I would like to ask you to prohibit this use of sales tax, as I am certain the voters that pass this tax intended it to stay here in our schools, educating all of the students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, next we have Linda Murray.
My name's Linda Moran from Woodland Park, and I just wanted to speak to you for a few minutes about the value of our public schools and some aspects about the funding that you may not know. In Colorado, every student has a homeschool and a public homeschool, whether they attended or not. So our homeschools in Woodland Park are Gateway, Columbine Summit, the middle school and the high school. However, many students don't go to their homeschool because in Colorado, we're a choice state. They can, they can choose to go wherever they want to. So they can go to a charter school like Merit Academy. They can go to a Manitou Air Academy. They can go to an online school and so on. And so, so they are able to go to whatever school they'd like to. Most of the time, the money flows with the student. So when a student goes to Manitou, for example, or goes to a charter school, the, the money flows to that, that entity. And most of the time, that works really well. However, for some students, there's a higher cost. And so sometimes we have some students that live here that have some special needs due to a variety of circumstances. Sometimes they have a disability. Sometimes they might have autism. They might have cognitive disabilities. They might have behavior problems, expulsion, suspensions, and so on. And when that happens with those students, the costs start to increase. So instead of having one student in a class of 30, now you have one student in a class of six, and a lot of times, we have additional services and things like that, hiring additional special education teachers, one-on-one parent educators, lots of therapies, mental health services, and specialized programs for some of those students. So when students attend a choice option, let's say they go to Manitou, they go to a charter school, what happens is, is that if a, if a student has some significant disabilities or behavior problems or the costs incur get much higher, that school can say, you know what, you need to go back to your homeschool. And so they can deny those services, and they can say, you need to go back to your homeschool, the homeschool being the public school. And in the state federally, a homeschool is obligated to provide whatever services are needed for our students. In Manitou, if a student goes to Manitou, Manitou can say, you need to go back to Woodland Park because of the services that are required. We don't have the services that, that you require. They would for their own students, but not for ours. So as a result, our public schools, if you walk into any one of our five public schools, we have some pretty significant programs in there. We have programs for kids with autism, programs for kids who have been expelled, and, and some of those are very expensive. So not that that's, it just means that we have them, and, and I will say that over the years, we've done an outstanding job with a lot of these students, but it is a cost that is incurred. A lot of people think that the district gets to, gets reimbursed for these students with special needs, but only about 25, maybe 30% of the cost of a special ed student, of a more significant student is reimbursed by the state or federal. The rest has to be picked up through general fund. So if you're looking at working with the school district, I think that the money is important, the sales tax money is important, but I would, I would encourage you to keep those things in mind when you're looking at how those funds are being distributed, that some of those funds for our homeschools, our homeschools here in Woodland Park are really important in order to be able to continue these critical programs for some of our most vulnerable students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I am, I'm going to apologize in advance for the pronunciation of this name. Kershid Rogers? And I hope I got that right.
You were close.
How do you say it?
Kershid.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm a parent of two children in Woodland Park School District and a resident of over 25 years in Woodland Park. I am here to support City Council in requiring financial reporting from the Woodland Park School Board as a means to ensure that the school sales tax is being used responsibly and for its intended purpose. Over the last year, I've become increasingly concerned by our district's financial trajectory and was dismayed when, for the first time I can remember, our auditors did not present their own findings to the board in a public meeting. At last night's school board meeting, we were presented a revised budget. Our expenditures are expected to exceed our revenue such that we may be starting our next school year with a record low beginning fund balance of around $5 million. For the last decade, we have maintained a fund balance of around $10 million. That may have been high, but to decrease that amount by fi- by half within the span of two years without a communicated plan, to me, is a sign of recklessness. Another financial concern is the new contract for Superintendent Kenwit, which included a 9.7% salary increase such that his salary is now greater than the large majority of superintendents for districts our size. He has also been guaranteed an annual 5% raise and potential 15% bonus, while our starting teachers' salaries are the second to lowest in the region. I'm also concerned about the district's financial prioritization of Merit Academy over our traditional public schools. They have given Merit Academy the entire middle school building, which is expected to be utilized by my calculations at approximately 48% next year. This board has decided that it was fair to reduce Merit's payment to the district for administrative oversight from $287,000 to $37,000 in spite of Merit having more students and using more of the district's facilities. Merit's payments for building and grounds maintenance reduced by 61% when it should have increased. Software costs, technology services, and other costs that also should have increased did not. When the district moved our sixth graders and now will move our seventh and eighth grades, I don't believe they accurately assessed, planned for, or presented those costs to the public. This is fiscally irresponsible. I am also concerned about what this board is spending in legal fees as a result of their unlawful gag order placed on staff, legal review of simple cora requests, and additional lawsuits that are making these fees excessive and concerning. There are many other examples of questionable spending decisions I could share, but in short, I would welcome any possible oversight you could provide for the spending of taxpayer dollars in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is John Pacheco.
Good evening. My name is John Pacheco. I've lived in Woodland Park for 27 years. I came here in 1997, and I was hired by the School District Board of Education to be superintendent. I spent seven years as superintendent. I retired. It was called back for another year when the district needed someone for a year, which got me, my wife telling me that I flunked retirement. When I agreed to step back in, after I did retire, I was asked to chair a committee to ask voters to pass a sales tax initiative for the school district in partnership with the city of Woodland Park. What I remember was going out to the various community groups and organizations along with the district staff to speak about the needs of the district, needs that we had in maintaining our facilities, which were severely in need of attention, and many defend other needs of the district. What I want to focus on is the partnership of the district had with the city when we did this. We had needs both in the city and the school district. What I want to focus on is the great working relationship between the city and our school district. We both had needs in recreational facilities and providing for the community, especially for our young people. I remember working with the city managers at that time, and Cindy Keating from the city, and Bob Graf, our own student programs director, and the use and the joint use of our facilities, and our two entities worked well together, and they supported each other. As a result, our students and our residents enjoyed the benefits of that partnership. The sales tax initiative was very successful and was very strongly supported by the entire community, and both the city and their staff and the school district, our board and personnel, worked together really well. I remember getting calls from other school districts about how we were able to do this, and I told them just really simply, one, we had a strong partnership between the school district and the city of Woodland Park, both by the city council, our school board, and the staffs. I believe it has been a great partnership between the city and the school district and a great model for showing how a school district and a city government can work together for the benefit of its students, particularly our young people. I really hope that this partnership continues. Some years back, I was, attended a meeting between the city council and the Board of Education to have both groups better understand the workings of the district and the city under that agreement. In my opinion, this kind of meeting should be held periodically, especially when there are new members in each of the entities. And I just want to say that this school district has had a strong, strong reputation, at least when, when I was here. We were strong members of coalition in the school districts. I worked hard with superintendents across the, the state to do certain kinds of things, and I can't tell you how many times I was told, how did you do that with city council and the board? And I said, it's simple. I didn't do anything. We just had people on both sides that cared about the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, the other two individuals signed up, I believe, want to speak on what will now be item 8A.
Okay, I, you know what, let's go ahead and let them go now because I don't, I don't usually take comment on initial posting.
Okay, so the first.
Just wrap it up now.
The first speaker would be Tim Northrup.
Okay.
Hi, Tim Northrup, Woodland Park. Yeah, I put it under 8A because I was looking, and it said, oh, initial posting, it needed to be under eight, and it said public comment, so that's why I decided to put it there. Thank you very much.
You did the right thing, but I typically don't take public comment on 8A, so.
Okay, I was just going by what the agenda said. Thank you. I was really disappointed and disheartened by what happened last council meeting with what seemed to be somebody who wanted to take the tax money of the citizens, hire an attorney, and threaten the school board. That's the way it seemed. If that was not the case, I apologize for that, my reading on the take of it. If you are indeed trying to take away the sales tax, I believe that is improper. I believe there's two different paths here, because you really have, what is the, the IGA really all concerned with was taking the fees. The city's charge was to take the fees from the school and give it to the school board. For those people who are concerned about, definitely, there are concerns about budgets and how it's spent and all that. That is really should be addressed with the school board, and so I feel there's two different things that are going on here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the final speaker this evening, Mayor, is Gwen Peckron.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, Council, appreciate the time tonight. I would like to address the sales tax ordinance. I think I follow conversation here. I appreciate the desire to ensure the district's sales tax revenues are not spent on legal fees but on educational purposes, as noted in the ballot. This is not lost on me, as I recognize the city has its own legal expenditures with the city attorney budgeted at $172,000, recent settlement of $65,000, and other various things that pop up with a government entity. I appreciate the city recognizes that enough of the citizens' local sales tax are spent on legal matters. However, let it also be known that unlike the city, the district's sales tax revenues have never been spent on legal fees, nor have they been spent on anything outside the approved ballot language. In 2016, the district business manager at the time began allocating the sales tax expenditures as listed on the ballot. These include educator salaries, technology, innovative programming, post-secondary preparation, the COP buyback of the bond property tax, and facilities. In May of 2023, the district's new CFO was hired in time to present the budget to the board in June's regularly scheduled public meeting. Being that the city has been short-staffed in the finance department, I am sure you appreciate how she hit the ground running. On June 14th, the CFO not only presented the budget, but also presented the allocation of sales tax following the historical formula and adhering to the approved ballot language. As in the past years, this presentation is publicly posted on the district's website in the June 14 minutes and was recorded and available in June's meeting video. Apparently, before the June board budget presentation, council members Harvey and Zuluaga asked how the sales tax would be spent, and the CFO promptly replied to both of them with the historically approved allocations. I heard that some council members may have misspoke that WPSD has not been transparent in this expenditure. I find this odd, considering it's been presented annually every June, is listed on the June's budget presentation, and was promptly sent to council members per their inquiries. The sales tax allocations follow the approved ballot categories, and for the first time since the sales tax approval, the expenses are also highlighted as a separate document in the district financial page. I am perplexed at council's judgment to shut down some of these educational programs through a hasty writing of the ordinance prior to the city election, especially given the many communications among both parties' representatives in the announced joint meeting next week, which I hope is very productive, and I agree with Superintendent Pacheco on keeping those connections. The city creative revenue stream diminished the bond property tax from residencies and overburdened businesses. This consumer tax receives 33% of revenues from tourists, far better than an unfair property tax. Educational programming and the $34 million of facility improvements don't dissipate. This is critical for the entire community, the whole district, where I began, through its music and art programs, its welding, its tutoring, college credits, court classes, and more. Local students and staff deserve the council's support. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment for this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Suzanne. All right, we are seven. We have no unfinished business. We are now on to 8A, which would be the approval of, it's just to move it to public hearing for the ordinance 1471, so.
Mayor, I'd like to suggest, given the public comment we've had and given the fact that this ordinance is premature, that we table this till after discussions with the school board. So I'd like to move then that this be tabled.
You're welcome.
Until date, I, I'm moving that it be tabled till Kelly.
Are you making a motion?
March 7th, date specific.
Okay, so you're making a motion to table this to March 7th.
The first reading.
I'll tell you what.
I'll second the motion.
So I have a motion to table this first reading to March 7th, made by Councilmember Zuluaga, seconded by Councilmember Connors. Would you like me to take the vote, Mayor?
Sure. Madam Mayor, I do have a question, a procedural question. If this results in a tie, does that kill the first reading?
Yes.
Well, it kills the, it kills the motion to move it. Okay. So another motion can be made for something different, or we will hear it tonight. Okay, thank you. We will not hear it, but we would move.
We will not hear it, but we would move it then. Here. Not hear it, sorry.
Mayor, I'd just like to to just share some thoughts that I had.
That's not appropriate, Madam.
Yeah, you gotta.
Mayor Protim.
Gotta do it before the vote was called.
Oh, I didn't know we called the vote. I'm sorry. I wasn't paying attention. Thank you.
Okay. Council, Mayor Protim case?
Um, no.
Zuluaga?
Yes.
Nakai?
No.
Connors?
Yes.
Harvey?
No.
Lebar?
Uh, no.
Okay, so motion failed four to two. And so now we can um discuss and make a new motion if necessary.
Right, you can either have a discussion or you can call the motion to move it to public hearing.
May I now share my thought?
Sure.
I just, I I initially thought that maybe this should be tabled to after our discussion with, on the twenty-ninth with the school board. But I think maybe on getting it through first reading, because we don't take public comment. Puts us to a a public hearing process where we can hear from any and everyone uh about their thoughts on this issue. And I I enjoyed hearing the two people that spoke this evening that the mayor allowed to speak during items not on the agenda. And I just would like to have the opportunity to hear anyone else that may want to address the council on this. And then public hearing is where we do that. Because I'm I'm looking, I just wanted to say, I'm looking forward to having the conversation with the school board. Because I think a lot of things are going to come to light and that the council will uh get where they'd like to be. And and I think we'll open the, Mr. Pacheco, open those lines of communication again. So that's my thoughts on that and the reason that I voted no. Thank you.
So help me under.
Councilmember.
Um, yes, and and uh Mayor Protim, I I appreciate those comments. I I too want to have that public discussion. We will not have a public comment during the work session. That'll be.
Correct.
Uh the board members and ourselves together to to talk about the IGA. And I'm very optimistic that we're going to come to an agreement on on what that IGA represents and the updates that need to be made to it. I I don't think that that's going to be an issue. Um but I I want to, two numbers, just want to throw these two numbers out. Twenty oh eight. Twenty seventeen. We finished our discussion on uh asking our attorney to draft an ordinance at twenty oh eight at our last meeting. At twenty seventeen. The school district attorney emailed our attorney and said, oh, there is a terrible, terrible misunderstanding. We've always meant to come to the table and talk about that IGA. I think what forced that to happen, and I'm so glad that it did. Was the fact that we were discussing that without transparency and accountability, it was very possible that this body could repeal the sales tax. I don't want to lose that as our leverage for our community. And for that reason, I I'm grateful that we're going to have that in place. It may be that after we have the IGA work session, that all of us will agree to pull that ordinance off. But right now, we need to have that in place to make sure that we are keeping our. Our trust with the community, that we're we're going to monitor how that tax is spent.
I'd just like to say that to take this approach is. It's disrespectful to the school board because council's leading with a threat. You know, uh Mr. Pacheco said that what made them so successful is because they worked together. That's not signaling that we're willing to work together, in my opinion. And just to put it out there as a sword before we even meet is foolishness.
Catherine and Frank, did you have anything to add to the discussion?
No, I'm good.
Yeah.
Well, I would, I would, um I don't really appreciate the language that we are threatening the school board. We have asked since. Um last May to have a meeting and it took putting the ordinance apparently on the agenda to get them to respond. So.
Mayor, you were out of town. You was in the last email exchange that we saw between the attorneys. It was in your hands to follow up to schedule that meeting in after Christmas.
I have been.
So do you have proof of an email of that?
With our city attorney. And I direct the city attorney to communicate to the board's attorney to invite them to the meetings. And then when you guys, I wasn't here, and the majority asked for this ordinance to be put on initial posting. It took majority vote to put it on.
It was a consensus. It was a, it was a.
It took majority consensus to put it on here. I was not present. As soon as you guys did that, you had a response from the school board that said, oh, we never said we wouldn't come. We'll come. So then I immediately said, great, do a doodle poll and show up. That's not a threat. That's an invitation that went unanswered until the council took this action.
Well, it's clear the community will understand whether it's a threat or not a threat.
And I don't think that there's any threat. I have no intent of taking away anything. What I have the intent of is when this council invites another professional body to an open public meeting. That they at least give a response. And they should technically show up willingly and openly.
Mayor.
So I'm ending the conversation with that and I'm going to go ahead and ask that the vote be called.
There's already core requests that understands all the email exchanges that went on. And the last email exchange was our attorney saying that our staff would get back to the school board for a meeting in January after Christmas.
That's right.
That was the last, and you were the only one who received a copy of that email. The rest of us who were here while you were on vacation did not know of that communication. We didn't know about that communication.
It doesn't matter that you didn't know. The school board has known since May of last year.
Did you miss my point that our attorney said that he would get, that our staff would get back to them?
That sometime in June, and there has been further communication. That you may not be privy to, but there has been communication. No one here is threatening anything. You all had a consensus to do an ordinance just in case the response continued to be the same.
I said what I've said for the record.
Madam Mayor, can we call the question?
Yes.
We need a motion.
Uh uh move to uh approve, what what are we calling this? Uh ordinance number fourteen seventy-one, series twenty twenty-four, and initial posting, an ordinance of the City Council of Woodland Park, Colorado, reducing the city's sales tax by one point zero nine percent effective. January first, twenty twenty-five, and setting the public hearing from March seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Harvey and a second by Councilmember Nakai. Zuluaga?
No.
Nakai?
Yes.
Connors?
No.
Harvey?
Yes.
Lebar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries four two.
Thank you, Suzanne. Under item nine, we have nothing. Under item ten, we have ten A, resolution nine twelve. And that is amendments to keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. And we have our Chair of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee, Cassidy here to present.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Um I am Kristin Higginmatham, uh Communications and Marketing Coordinator for the city. I am also the city uh liaison for the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. Uh tonight, we are here to seek the adoption of the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful bylaws, um and Cassidy is here to present.
Thank you, Kristin. Thank you, Council, for taking the time to hear us out tonight. Um my name is Cassidy Gilganis. I am the Vice Chair of the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee. Um I've been on the committee since um twenty twenty and I've been a resident of Woodland Park since uh uh for about ten years. I want to first thank uh um Kristin for helping us to prepare the staff report with the summary of the proposed revisions that we've put um in front of council. As well as Nina, as well as Suzanne, for the assistance in the administrative process and bringing um those documents before you tonight. Um. I am uh happy to review the proposed changes to the bylaws uh per the staff report uh in detail, line by line, if that's what you prefer. I understand that uh the members of council have been furnished with a copy of the proposed bylaws, um amendments and uh or uh. Changes to the bylaws and uh the summary of the staff report as well as the red line. So uh in the interest in respecting the council's time, I wanted to ask um if your preference would be to to go through in detail. Or if um if council's taking the time to review, if you have any questions, concerns, or anything that would be worthy to address uh for council tonight.
Council, do you have any questions or comments? Have you all reviewed them? You're comfortable with the changes?
I I'd just like you to comment. Hi.
Hi.
I'd just like you to comment on the um the uh number of members on the board. And the ability to move things along and and how that's brought that changes to the bylaws.
Yeah, the the committee has um been uh, we have had a small group for the last couple of years. Um uh coming out of the pandemic, we lost a couple of members and have since been uh around, I think, between. I'd have to check, but I think between between three to five active members at any given point in time. Um our concern was just that if the minimum, uh as it was stated, were to were to continue at the stated number of three. That if for whatever reason, there were only two members of the committee that it, the committee, and and it 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 would no longer exist or it would cease to function. Um with this, with the city's supervision. And so um we proposed that simply to keep the the committee functioning, even if we two only had um two active uh committee members. Or just trying to eliminate any of the, essentially the protocols that would restrict the committee from from uh from continuing to operate and engage with the community.
Thanks.
Council, anything further?
Mayor, I see their compensation is the same as ours.
That it is.
And they do a whole lot more work than we do.
Should we double?
Picking up trash.
I will simply summarize in entirety that our, really our goal with the proposed revisions is to to clarify the role of the committee. Um to introduce some uh some areas of opportunity and things that are related to beautification, such as uh the wildlife within our community, for example. Um and to broaden uh the sort of the role of the committee and the community and uh and 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 measures that support both of those uh related initiatives, so.
Very good. Well, seeing nothing further from council, is there anything further you'd like to add?
Uh not at this time, no, thank you.
Very good. Council, can I get a motion then?
I'll move to approve resolution nine twelve, series twenty twenty-four, amendments to the Keep Woodland Park Beautiful Committee bylaws.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a first by Mayor Protim Case and a second by Councilmember Nakai. Zuluaga?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Connors?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Lebar?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for all the work you guys do, too. We appreciate it. Okay, we're off to reports and I have a couple of dates to announce if I can read over the notes I took. Uh co-ed third grade through eighth grade volleyball registration is open until Monday, the nineteenth, with practices starting on February twenty-sixth with the city. Adult drop-in basketballs back on Friday nights at the middle school, starting at seven thirty PM. On Monday, February nineteenth, City Hall, Parks and Rec, Yuke Pass Cultural Center and the Aquatic Center will be closed in Observation of Presidents' Day. So again, Monday, February nineteenth, the rec center will be closed, the pool will be closed, and the cultural center will be closed. On Tuesday, March fifth, from five to seven here in City Hall. Council chambers, the Greater Woodland Park Chamber will sponsor the Woodland Park City Candidates Forum. This event is free and encouraged for the electorate to come and hear from the candidates who are vying for mayor and council for the city of Woodland Park. And again, that's Tuesday, March fifth, from five to seven here in council chambers. And that is all I have. Councilmember Case.
Thank you. Thank you. Um just a couple of reports. First of all, Parks and Rec uh monthly report still uh looking fabulous. In fact, twenty-four. Programs. Participation and purchases of punch passes and things um for body sculpt and ice skating lessons and and such. Went from three ninety-three at as of this time uh in twenty-three to five sixty-three. So it's almost doubled, getting towards double. Anyway, um great, great work that they're all doing. And um. Encourage them to keep it up. Um the other thing I wanted to share was from the PPACG Board of Directors meeting yesterday. C dot update, uh sixty-seven north, which will be a widening to. Think it's Research or Woodland Valley Ranch Drive. Uh where you turn, I believe, to go to the police department. Um will be in the bid process. No, they're opening bids on Thursday, the twenty-second for that project. Which is going to take place this summer. As far as construction. So they will award contract after those openings. And then the US twenty-four Signal Replacement Project is going to take place still this summer, I believe. And that is at Aspen Garden Way and Trout Creek. And to improve that intersection. The last thing that I wanted to share is they are hosting an all-elected officials from the region. They're holding a meeting for everyone to attend and and collaborate and visit on Thursday, March twenty-eighth. From six to seven thirty PM at PPACG offices. And that's all I have, Mayor. Six to seven thirty, yes. And I'll get more information on that from them next meeting, I'm sure.
So Kelly, on that uh from twenty-four, you said to Research. Uh is it broken up into two parts from twenty-four to um Kelly Road? And then the other part down beyond it, or are they going to go all the way from Kelly Road through Research?
I believe they're going all the way because part of that project, Robert, is those egress and turn lanes, the suicide turn lanes that we've talked about several times. Um that project is going to be rolled into that. Now, whether they widen all the way, he wasn't specific about that, but I think they are widening down to Kelly's. And then creating those turn lanes and in egress and. What do you call it when you ingress?
Yeah.
And egress.
So from Kelly to Research. I didn't know that there was plans to do that as well, so, because Aaron had given us an update report and and he didn't say that, so that's what I'm asking.
There, there are. There are plans to do it. I don't know if they're going to do it all at the same time, but eventually, in in the near-term plans, it is to do the entire stretch. I don't have the timeline of that stretch between Kelly's and Research, but it it is all planned.
But it's not all going for bid as one, though, is it? At least that's what I understood from what you said, so.
I will say that this has been fluid, so it is possible that that has changed.
There's been, I know there's been some funds opened up and Ben's been in great communication.
Okay.
So it very well may happen at the same time because, you know, there's economies of scale. If they're already deployed, there's savings. So I think they're trying to incorporate that. Don't quote me on that. I'm not.
Well, we.
I'm not the authority.
We got an extra two hundred grand for Rampart Range in Kelly Road, so sure.
Yeah, we'll see how that goes, but it's exciting because it, those car catchers along sixty-seven may get some help.
There's one this this last one.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have. Councilmember Zuluaga.
Uh, thank you. Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. Well, as you heard, um people in Park Beautiful need some volunteers. Local government works by we all getting paid the same and it's volunteer. And uh it's just, it it's good to be part of the community. So my appeal to any of you who feel like you'd like to participate in uh our community is we could use some more people on on Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. So uh if you're creative and you like to pick up trash, that's only one function. There's actually some very creative people on Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. We're getting some cool um artwork being planned for twenty uh twenty-four. And uh so Ben's been working us with us on that, so please uh apply. Suzanne will be happy to take your application. That's all. Thank you.
Member Nakai. And remember, you don't have to live in the city of Woodland Park to be on Keep Woodland Park Beautiful.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Let's forget that.
Yeah.
Always forget that. The UAC met this month, and we are um, working on our planned build-out for water and looking at the upcoming golf course water agreement. So we're going to be meeting on a more regular basis to try to iron all of that out. I think that's all we did at that meeting, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
It was nice and short.
Yes, it was. And other than that, that's all I have.
It was a three-hour meeting, just chiming in on, on the utilities. It was, it was fabulous. Kip has really put a lot of thought, a lot of, a lot of spreadsheets to really lay out. Something that I've seen missing is to take the, the build-out of what's left for Woodland Park in terms of properties and what zoning they are and what sort of use. And he's really graphed that out beautifully, so that we see that we can meet our, we can meet our development needs and make the necessary acquisition and allocation of water. So I feel very hopeful of what he's put together, and I'm very glad Kip's been put more full-time on, on our water, even though we had a water burst this week, and it took all of our staff. So, thank you.
Councilmember Connors?
Thank you. Three dates to remember for the beginning of March. The Free Veterans Breakfast at the Thai Good Eats Restaurant will be at 8 o'clock on the 2nd of March. It's free to all veterans. On the 3rd of March, the Ute Pass Historical Society will be doing a lunch and a program after lunch on the Navajo Code Talkers. That's going to be at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. And then at Memorial Park on March, March 8th, there's going to be a plaque demonstra, plaque dedication for the Ladies Home Demonstration Club. And they are the club that initially started Memorial Park. So there'll be a dedication for a plaque on March 8th at Memorial Park at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
I have no report, but I'm hoping that the city manager can talk to us a little bit more about the water acquisition that may be occurring with the golf course.
I, I don't have any update on that at this time.
And is that because? Why, why would we not be able to talk about that if that was talked about at the UAC?
That was, that was not discussed at the UAC.
That we're going to look at the agreement, not.
We, we looked at the water agreement that
Okay.
Has been, was a 25-year agreement, and now it's going to come up, I think, three years from now.
Okay. So nothing to do with the fact that the golf course is now for sale?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Coincidence.
That's all.
Sorry. Nina?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Erin?
All right. I would like to recognize our Streets and Field Services crews for the amazing job they've been doing with plowing and clearing the roads. They really have been given a tall order, and they're doing exceptional. As Councilmember Zuluaga stated before, we did have a water break this week that was pretty significant. We had quite a bit of our crew working on that, so they, they really have been working hard, so I'd like to recognize them. In addition, on March 7th, I will be bringing forward to you someone to swear in as the new treasurer. It's Monet Edwards. She's been our accounting manager for the last five years, so really excited about that. I think it's going to be a great asset to the city. I'm pretty excited. And then I'll turn it over to Suzanne to give a brief election update.
Thank you, Erin. Yesterday, all of the overseas and military ballots were mailed. So the Yuakava ballots were mailed. There were about, there were about 65 of them that were mailed. As council knows, these ballots go out earlier than other ballots, so it allows them for more time to return them. I was looking and having fun looking at where some of these ballots are going, and they're going all over the world. We have ballots going to Zimbabwe. We have ballots going to the Marshall Islands. We have ballots going to Korea and England. It was just a lot of fun, just spending a little time looking at where they're going. And so my hope is we get them back. We get them voted and we get them returned. So they went out yesterday. Our ballots for the residents and the registered voters of Woodland Park will be going out the week of March 11th, so that's when they'll hit your mailboxes. And then thank you, Mayor, for bringing up the candidate forum. I just would like to remind everyone again, that's on March 5th. It's here in council chambers. We will have as many seats as we can available. We'll bring in the extra chairs like we always do. But for those that cannot come in person, we will have it via Zoom and televised live. So if you can't watch it that evening, you can go back and watch it another time. Thank you, Erin.
And I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.